Successfully ready to transition to middle school. Last year, we had teachers participating in the math class as well as other teachers, unfortunately were not able to, but they had access to use the math. So they began using that even before, so it was kind of a front lawn preview for them as well too. But not only that, in the math aspect, some of our teachers also decided to access the Engage Me Your Confluence program in this part. So we had heads up in that part and especially with our upper grades, we're using, they had fun doing some novel studies as well too. And our kids really enjoyed it. And they said, instead of reading X, they got to get a depth to look at really that way to that part. In regards to where we're also going, for not only our students who are at that benchmark, we also have support for students who are at not only below, but above that level too. So one of the things that we've also done along with the recent math is that we've brought in accelerated math so that we can backfill some of those holes for our students for the program, but also allow some of the students who are accelerating to that level too. In regards to intervention, we have our initial, we have instructor aides who will be assisting in several more instructional intervention programs, a reward for our fifth and sixth, or system 24 for our third and fourth graders, as well as our high school, and this year we, what's been nice is for special our climates, we're going for four hours of 46 hours of one, in addition to our other, yeah, we have that school too, that's been really nice. This one is really dear and hard, the culture of climate. We have been going through the PBIS along with our JP. And every year we've been adding more and more. What's been nice is that our new vice principal, she had the privilege of staying last year at Lincoln and at Monterey Park. And so she has brought some really wonderful ideas that those two schools are generating so that we are able to add it to what we are already building as well too. An example, I want to give great credit to Lincoln is that they were, we're the article of vehicles as a teaching tool for procedures and expectations, like in the bathroom, it's like a level. Our students can go back and refer to that as well too. You know, and it's all about collaboration, borrowing wonderful ideas from other kinds of students who are going to ours. This year, we are also in terms of adding the peer mediation where students are involved in the resolution as well too. We believe ours is all about solving, resolving conflicts within the positive manner. On top of that, with our culture of climate, what we've also been doing is a lot of our recognition, award recognition, they've been done not only through academics, but also through the initiative. Every month, we have our student month. In fact, what we also do is we also have our wonderful lady in the food service cafeteria thanks like several students to recognize as well too. So this isn't just the teachers within the classroom, this is also throughout campus. Oh, and our sports programs, both in the fall and winter, our girls volleyball, flag football, basketball in the winter, we normally have, it's normally four through six, and we normally have a sports practice thing, so they get really excited about that. In terms of parent involvement, one of the things that we're really looking at is when we look at PTO, PTA, a lot of them, we think their focus is on parents, but we put that on the teacher. And this past year, we really emphasize the partnership between parents and teachers. And that is really helping, really helps us, and we're looking forward to this year as well too. As part of the parent involvement, gets really, we decided to do a test run this year before school started last week. We have what we call the parent around it. It's kind of in the manner of what Washington Middle School too, and getting families to come before, because we know that the day before school starts, we have forums of parents trying to see where your child is in the new place. So we did all these things in form later. And what we also did was we invited resort justice partners to come and have a move to share the parents out of the RDP as well. And what was nice is one parent came up and said, hey, I talked to them and I, I want to volunteer for our teachers, you know, and that was it. We also invited approximately coming and have some activities that they were going to be combining across here. It was a very informal manner where parents, teachers went and took a deep connect, and it also gave our PTO a chance to recruit parents for various things. Now, really, you know, because we know that when school starts, we can have everybody busy, everybody trying to be family, and so that's kind of really, okay? We will also continue to have various family activities and learning activities tonight, okay? All right. But there's another key that we felt was very important, and how do we support teachers? What's been nice is that this year we have a clinic that can help support teachers, but they alone are not the only support, myself and our vice principal, you know, they need to be there to support the teachers. We also have strong lead teachers trained in lab rallying areas that are there to support, you know, not just the new, but also, you know, to add, and also give some fresh ideas and stuff as part of that. Our focus really is based on what we as a district, when we decide to do tests, the closed reading, which is information tax, the collaborative conversation, and argumentation. These three areas, we are looking at it as not subject specific, but across all areas of project, that we have planned. Good example, in terms of the collaborative conversation and the closed reading, what Linda Dilger said, said, at one of the, in this math training is math. You read, you write, then you drop. Okay? And so it isn't just numbers, you know, if she talks about making sure that there's the application. Again, we will be continuing with our PLCs and celebrations. Any questions? Oh. Okay, also, one last thing, and Mr. Penn, with that, Ms. Barrera, that fact, I tend to be university podcast to get the schedule for Thursday, the 18th, I think, is Thursday? No, sorry. And the reason why it's a tentative aspect of it is I need to check and see whether or not Washington Middle School has something, because I, that one was told me that my son had told me that Washington Middle School has a back school. If that's the case, then it will be moved to the teaching, which is good.
Any questions from the board members?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Welcome back. Good evening, please.
Good evening. My name is Sigla Weta, I'm the principal on special assignments for the categorical department and program improvement. And I want to welcome all of you guys to a new school year. So I wanted to start with good evening, saying good evening to President, Superintendent Martinez, board members, cabinet, and everybody here in the audience. Today, I have a bringing to you a presentation on our local educational agency plan. This plan is required, is required by all districts in California that receive state and federal funding in California. This plan that I'm bringing to you today, it was revised initially in 2006, and it needs to be revised in the, we revised it this summer, and I'm bringing it to you for information. This time, this, this evening, and next month, it's going to be for action. So let's see, and the plan is designed to meet the needs of all students, including special education students and English language learners. This plan is aligned to our LCAP and school plans. And I have a little visual at the end, so you can see how it is aligned. So the goal of the LEA plan, so like the LCAP and school plan, is for all students to reach proficiency in reading and mathematics, including English language learners and special education students, and for them to be taught by highly qualified teachers, and also for students to be in a safe learning environment conducive to learning. And this is what we updated, there's different, 10 different items that we had to update the plan. We had to make sure that the, number one, that the curriculum is aligned to the California State Common Core standards. They're all instructional materials, also aligned to the 21st century skills, and that we need the requirements for instructional minutes, first minutes, for example, we need to be the two and a half hours of English, language arts, English language arts or Spanish language charts, two and a half hours for first through third grade, fourth through sixth, two hours, and making sure that we provide intervention as well, and making sure that we are teaching 45 minutes of EOD every single day for those English language learners, and that we provide intervention, using supplemental instructional materials approved by our board here. And then also, we need, we're using technology, we're using programs that enhances or continues to build the skills for students, and of course, provide professional development for our teachers and instructional aid, both for in language arts and for math, to continue improving our students' curriculum or academics. And to have multiple meeting opportunities for, excuse me, for parents to get involved, such as some of the items that the principals presented, making sure that parents are welcome, we're meeting their needs, providing educational workshops for them to assist their children at home. And then also having multiple measures for student learning, such as our local benchmarks, analyzing self data, of course, now the SBACK, Formative, and assessment, common assessment that teachers have, so that's having multiple measures for student learning. And then also providing supplemental services. And with this, it's our SES program for those Title I schools that are in program improvement that we, that we contract with outside, with state providers that are approved by CDE. And also continue the communication of services for students that are in preschool, for those parents, so they can have knowledge about our kindergarten program, and also the sixth grade students visiting the middle school and providing information to the parents. So that's in the plan, that's what we updated. And this is just, just to recap, this is official, so we have a kind of a triangle, we have the LCAP, and then the LEA plan, this is the information that I'm giving to you, and the SPCA, it's SPSA, sorry, it's the school plan. But all, this is because all of them are receiving federal funds, such as the Title I, Title II. Actually, the district receives Title I, Title II, and Title III, the schools receive Title I funds, and LCFF funds, or the local control funding formula. So all of them are connected, and, and actually, I'm thinking, maybe someday the state will have just one plan. And I think they're working on that, because it's, I mean, in reality, right now, we have two plans, is we have the LCAP, and then we have the LEA plan. Okay? And any questions?
Turn back to that slide. So hopefully, tonight, board, you were able to see the connection as the three schools presented their single plan for student achievement. Single plans for student achievement are requirement for all schools who are receiving state and federal funds. And we talked a little bit about the federal program monitoring that will happen later this year. And it's tied to our LEA is our local educational agency plan, and every district, we are called an LEA, who receives both federal and state plans, has to have this particular plan in place. So our LEA plan, the local educational agency plan, has been updated to be aligned with our LCAP. And so the LCAP, of course, drives how all of our state funds are being used under our local control funding formula, and the LEA plan looks more around our federal funds. Those goals, goal one is driven by Title I programs, goal two is driven by, I think, Title III programs, and goal three in your LEA plan is driven by your Title IV two programs. And since we're not a unified district, we don't do the graduation piece. But the last goal is tied, was tied to a Title IV funds, federal funds, which is really about safe schools. And so all of this, I asked you, you're going to put this graphic together, because it really does depict the relationship between all of the different plans and the funding sources of how this drives a district, and the requirements that come along with that. As you know, when we get federal funds, we have stipulations and compliance pieces to meet. So hopefully, this graphic will give you a visual representation of how, as our principals are presenting their single plans for student achievement, are tied both to the LCAP and tied to the local educational agency plan.
But for, for that agent, I can, yeah, rest of it? I don't know. These are the areas that they both, the areas in the middle are what both LCAP and those are.
They're the same, basically, they're the same goal.
There's an overlap. If you look at our LCAP, the local control accountability plan is based on the eight state priorities. You'll find that those eight state priorities overlap with the goals of the local agency plan, and those aren't spelled out there. I'm supposing that over the last two years, you've had multiple opportunities for stakeholder engagement to know what those eight state priorities are. And so you hear them over and over again, the three goals that our district is focused on, is about academics, it's about culture and climate, and it's about parent and community involvement. Those three pieces are very much, they're also three of the state priorities as outlined in the local control accountability plan, but they're also a huge portion of what happens both with our LEA plan and with our single plans for student achievement. It's all intertwined. And like Mrs. Warta said, hopefully, one day, we will see it under one, one umbrella. But right now, it isn't, and right now, we have federal compliance to make sure that our LEA plan is updated annually. And this is because we will be going through federal program monitoring, it is extremely important that this be brought to your attention, that you look at this, and it will be on an action item for approval for our next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
It comes to my attention, we have a C1 in the packet, not on the agenda, but it's on the packet, so. Correct me to the, you need to change.
I just noticed that Mr. Donaldson, here, and in the packet, we have C1, which is a classified layoff action. Do you present it for that?
I can comment, yeah, there is a resolution for classified layoffs, which essentially is a notice to use these positions as an action item that needs to be brought to the board for action. But the actual implication to this item is an increase of hours to those employees who are receiving this layoff.
So the next meeting, what I'm saying is, you notice, the next meeting, we will have that on the agenda.
This is for information, we talked about how we were there closely with the positions that were four hours.
The question is, who's going to present the resolution so that we can take action after we get public comment?
Please identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Rosie Sanchez. I am the chief negotiations for CSCA, and I'm also the chief job steward for grievances. Do you want me to address my comments before the resolution? Okay. In reading the resolution, we see the list of layoffs, and if my addition is correct, that's 31 positions. We understand the LCAP funded the IA additional two hours to increase the four hours to six hours, or something like that. Nonetheless, the district opened six hour positions. When they told CSCA that the district was opening six hour positions, we thought, that is wonderful, we are happy that the district is appreciating and having full-time instructional assistance. But never did the district tell us that they were going to eliminate 31 positions, maybe two hours for each of those positions, but never were we given a list of the positions. The employees were not concerned about it because they were all very comfortable in their positions, they knew there was going to be an increase, not an increase. Consequently, because we didn't have the list, we didn't see this list until Friday, and that's the honest truth. That's just for your information. And we, these past few days, employees have been contacting us with their concerns of what is happening. Usually, when, you know, we're not new to layoffs in this district, as you all are aware. When there's going to be layoffs, CSCA and the district works together to minimize the effects of the layoffs. In this case, it was totally opposite. They opened positions, and now we're going to work on the effects. And we do go by seniority. So, you know, that's a whole different scene that's going to happen in the near future. But just to give you an idea of what is happening, we have one employee that didn't apply for the six hour position because she already had six hours and was very comfortable, was never given a clue that she was going to be transferred. And consequently, she's being split into two schools. She goes to school A, then in the middle of the day, goes to school B, comes back to school A, and doesn't get a lunch hour until, I think, the sixth hour. Starts at 7:40, doesn't get a lunch hour until 1:30. And so we try to negotiate those effects, and the answer is no, that's the way it is. That's one employee was very unhappy, was never offered a mileage stipend, was never offered transportation time, and really doesn't have a lunch break, because her day ends way after 1:45. Another employee, because of these things that are happening, who has worked for 18 years in the district, was very comfortable in her position as well, didn't really have the need or the opportunity to, no, I shouldn't say not the opportunity, didn't find the need to apply for six hour positions because she had no clue that she was going to be transferred, and consequently, was not comfortable with the place that she was being placed at, and so she resigned. We have employees that are unhappy with what is happening. And I really feel that we need to start over again, because something is not, something doesn't feel right. We're not negotiating the effects, things are happening already, and employees are I don't know why we weren't presented this list of cuts. We knew there were some, just a couple, but not this many. And in the resolution, it says no employee will lose hours as a result of reassignment, reemployment. How can that be, if 31 positions are being cut for the purpose of improving 14 positions? I've been trying to do the math, and it just doesn't feel like it's adding up. I understand we don't have a human resource permanent position, but I really feel that the district needs to take the responsibility to get together with CSCA to resolve these issues, because we are not going to put up with this kind of layoffs without forewarning, without negotiating the effects. In fairness to CSCA, we have always worked with this district to negotiate the effects. And I think that it's time that this district be fair with us, with the employees, and we're not asking for much, we just, you know, want what is right. Reconsider, you know, this resolution, we are willing to work with the district, it's honestly, the district is willing to work with us. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Barney?
I know, it doesn't give the public comment first. My name is Priscilla Ortiz, I'm an RSTA at Cameron School, and I'm one of the employees who is affected by this. I will not be having a 30-minute lunch break, I will be having a 15-minute lunch break due to this transfer. I had my whole six hours at Cameron School, now I only have five. I have to do one hour at Bronda. So in the time that takes me to come back to Cameron School, it'll be 12 minutes travel time, and only 15 minutes for my lunch. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Want to continue, or another question?
Well, I don't have a question, I have a comment, if public comment, the public comment is closed tonight.
Continue?
Well, I'd like to ask the rest of the board if they would be willing to pull this item and re-agendaize it for the next meeting until it's resolved. I really believe strongly that this is either, whatever it is, it needs to be resolved. And I would like to see it, I looked at the date, it said October 10 is the date that it would be coming to effect, so it sounds to me like we still have some time to discuss it, and I'd like to see that happen. So my motion is to remove this and re-agendaize it for the next meeting.
Second. Second. I was just, oh. I saw it through, I can't.
I do, I have a question. You have a question, okay? Yeah, if, if we are asking our employees to travel to different school sites to do their job, why are they not compensated? I mean, that's completely ridiculous. That's what we're looking at. That is offensive.
I mean, that's third, you can, read your fine print then. Change the motion, to the second, and discussion.
It's not critical that we do this tonight, is it? That's what I was wondering.
I guess the question was, is it, you're asking, is it critical for this evening? Because according to the resolution.
I know, the 45 days are something like that, not really. 60, 60 days now, that's why it was predicated tonight for, in October, but I would expect that to be delayed until 25 October. That would be all right? Yeah, that's not critical.
Second. Let me move. Second. We'll get this straightened, okay?
Yeah, the way that this was presented to the board, it seemed like a very simple thing where no one was going to be losing hours. It even says on that. So I mean, we really need to, to do this out, get this.
Because I recall, I remember it was, okay, we have to get rid of, to add everybody's extra hour. I mean, you guys, that's what I, that's what we understood. I mean, this is a complete another.
I think there are details that probably have not been worked out, and some of those are probably in the schedule, so. That's, I mean, Mr. Donaldson isn't here tonight, by the way, he is in the hospital, so that's why he's not here. But my understanding was, this is, is an opportunity to increase hours. Anytime the travel and lunches and, you know, switching schools are involved, I get that. I know it's an inconvenience, and I don't expect employees to take 15-minute lunches, but there is details, I think, that have not been worked out that we're hearing about that we may need to just table this, is what I'm hearing, is there's a. I'm hearing that there's a motion and a second obligation.
Motion by Ms. Barnes, second by Mr. Garcia. In a further discussion, although the favor, 5-0, move on. Thank you. Okay? This is a 45-day budget revision.
Good evening, President Garcia, Trustee Superintendent Martinez. I stand before you tonight to present a 45-day budget revision. Ed Code 42127 requires budget revisions when substantial changes are made that affect funding or expenditures after the budget is approved. We approved our budget at the end of June, and we did that based on some assumptions. All those assumptions didn't come to fruition, some were changed, one was to the veteran force, and a couple were not. Normally, when you have significant changes, you would redo the budget and present that. That is not the case tonight. The Monterey County Office of Education Associate Sue for Business Services has directed us to include that at the first interim budget report, vice doing a separate 45-day formal revision. So this was, I guess, a lot softer than having to pile, you know, 10 pounds of budget onto you for three changes. Your enclosure, however, will reflect that the LCFF, a Local Control Funding Formula budget gap, was projected at the May revise to be 53.08%. When the budget was, the state budget was finally approved, it was reduced to 51.52%. Hence, we will receive about $345,000 in less funding. Is that significant in an $80-plus, $90 budget? No. It could be, that pays for some teachers. Last year, it went up, we assumed something at the May revise, and it almost doubled by the time we got the final budget for the revise we did last year. There was some one-time mandate funding that was pledged to us in amount of $601 per P288. And interestingly enough, the CDE all year, or the last half of the year, said, you're going to get 601 bucks. Come June, with the approved budget that the Governor signed, that was reduced to $528, hence a reduction of $633,441. Then, we had some special funds that were going to be granted, and it's called the Educator Effectiveness Program. And we had estimates all over the dartboard of how much per FTE we would get, from very low to 200 to higher numbers. The consensus was, it was going to be about 200. That was not the case at all. And in fact, we had projected getting $32,000 for that, and in fact, we're going to get about $601,000 now. So that's an offset of income to the two decreases you see. So really, the net loss, when you put all three of those together, is $377,908. That's the way the state does their budget guidance, folks, and you've got to love it. It's frustrating on a good day. So at first interim, we'll reflect these formally. We have some good news, and that our schools are really packing in, you've heard that? So we expect our estimate of 88 to go up based on increased C-bets. That's good news for us. So when I come back at first interim, we should have some good news on overall funding, it should be relatively stable. And then we'll go through the whole process again with state estimates, and plans, and projections, and promises that get changed on 30 June. Are there any questions?
Ms. Barnes? Any questions?
Very disconcerting. What, that we project our budget on something and it changes, it's like a swimming target. But you said, I mean, the report itself says, $978,908 is the decrease in revenue, and you're saying that it balances out from another fund to make the negative 377,000?
That's correct. If you'll look at the three lines on the enclosure, the first two lines show a decrease of $345,000 and $633,000, and that was the $978,000. At that time, we did not know how much we would get for the Educator Effectiveness Program. We thought it might be $82,000, so that number was not in the equation when we reflected the reduction of $978,000. We now know that will be $601,000, so the total loss in revenue is only 377,908.
But I talked to you earlier about this, you said, but we're borrowing that money from the debt fund, 56, we still have to pay that back.
Yes. We had planned when it was going to be a million dollars, and we still have that recommendation to the Board, to take that money from money we set aside in two funds for debt service. We have Fund 56 that pays our solar, cop, and Fund 56 that pays our Q-skip, the Qualified School Construction Bond monies. We put money in those for significant debts that will be due in the future. Additionally, we place a million dollars in the OPEB fund, Fund 67, that is significantly underfunded, and we'll have to build that over years. So in the short term, when it was 978, our plan was to then reduce the money we put in those funds to be able to pay the 978. It may be now at 377, if we don't get any more changes, that we can absorb some of that, because we, as you know, we budget conservatively. For example, when we add 13 teachers or 25 teachers, we will take a look at an average of their benefits, and an average of seniority, where in many cases, we'll hire junior teachers who are single, and so there'll be some savings in the benefits package, and some savings in their salaries initially. And that money can go back in the pot, so we aren't stuck at the end of the year by having budgeted just the opposite, and been very, you know, risk-taking. I'd rather come back at you and say, we have this money in our hands, rather than say, we need to go borrow this money to make ends meet.
Anyway, it's not good news. It's money we thought we had.
Yes.
Any other questions? Any questions? No? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, where we need to approve the 45-day revision. Is this just information, or?
Do we have to approve it? The state does not require approval. In past years, we have approved it, when we thought it was significant, we would have to do the 45-day revise until MCOE said, you don't have to do it. I would have asked for your approval. At this point, you can make your own decisions.
This is it for today? Okay. Thank you. So, what are we going to do? Is it? Okay. You know, our next meeting's going to be on 24th at 5:30 here, in this facility. Okay? And then, that's a study session, the regular session will be on the 14th, September. Okay? Although, I agree.
Well, I'd like to ask, what's the study session going to be on?
I don't have the.
Who was it?
I know that one of the things I want to bring to a study session is a report for our smart balance assessment, so that you have an idea of what that's looking like. We're hoping that, again, in Virginia, I think, still you're out there, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but our scores are still coming in, they're being scored as we speak, but you need an overall information of what this information's going to look like for our district, and also what our student reports are going to look like that are going out to our parents. And so, that's one item on the Board agenda, and I'm going to ask Lydia if you have the other topic that we have on our study session?
No, I don't, I don't have. Because they only, what they do is they take one topic and use that hour to review it.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion. I mean, we seem to be growing greatly, and our facilities are busting at the seams, and some, they soon, I'd like to talk about facility. How are we going to provide room for our students? And I'd like to be able, I can't talk about it in closed session, because it's not identified. If we did a study session, we could talk about it, I would guess.
Mr. Tran, will we be able to bring the facilities update report on the 24th for our study session?
We could provide the status of what we have, projections by the.
I think we'll have a greater information around our enrollment figures, which is, right now, I guess you can, we really felt that we were projected very low, according to registrations in our TK and our Kinder Programs, and then they're coming in droves. So I think, maybe on the 24th, usually, you know, it takes the first two weeks of school and after Labor Day to get a firmer count on enrollment, but we can give you what we have, the information we have on the 24th.
Thank you. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Hereby, a turn.
I just had a question, if study sessions were open to the public.
Yeah, they are.
Thank you.